The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please?
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenek. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Tomgrotty. Alderman Tedgrotty. Alderman Repela. All are present with the absence of Alderman Repela.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is two public hearings. The first is a special use permit for 1415 Appleton Road. Director Schrader.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, this special use permit is for an auto sales, vehicle sales, and maintenance service facility. This does, this use does require a special use permit within, within the C1 zoning district. There is an existing vehicle sales and maintenance service facility on this property. However, they are looking at basically adding, completely revamping the entire site. So with that, because there was no previous special use permit at that time, that would trigger us to kind of look at that special use permit. So again, this is an existing dealership. They are looking at expanding, building a much larger building, a much more large displaced area. This was reviewed by the City Plan Commission. They did recommend approval of both the special use permit as well as the site plan. And based upon the criteria that the use is compatible with adjacent land uses, shall not have an appearance that adversely affects adjacent properties, the use is reasonably related to the overall needs and the existing land use patterns, the use will not cause traffic or congestion, and it shall have adequate utilities and access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities. So with that, again, the staff and City Plan Commission did recommend approval of this special use permit as presented for TriCityAuto for an automotive sales and service facility at 1415 Appleton Road, finding that the existing use, the use is existing, meeting the requirements of Section 13111B of the zoning code and conforms to the comprehensive plan.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the project this evening? No? Seeing no one, we'll call that special hearing to, public hearing to a close. And the second special use permit is for 1281 Midway Road. Director Schrader?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So again, another special use permit. This proposal is to add two additional storage unit buildings. The current property is located just off of Midway Road behind Tesh Chemical. If you've been out there, the property's kind of set back a ways from the road, just north of the business park. There is an existing mini warehouse facility on that site. And per the City of Manassia zoning code, within the C4 business district, any expansion of that mini warehouse facility existing prior to January 1 of 1991 is allowed but does require a special use permit. So again, staff did look at that. The two buildings that are being proposed would be brought up to additional today's standards with 50% brick or natural stone requirements. And then additionally, the current lot is all gravel. That would all be paved in a hard surface. So staff did consider the criteria within the zoning code, compatible with adjacent land uses and existing land uses, that you shall not have an appearance that will adversely affect adjacent properties, the use is reasonably related to the overall needs and the existing land use patterns, the use will not cause traffic or hazard, hazardous conditions, and the use has adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities. So again, with that, the staff and the City Plan Commission did recommend approval of that special use permit for Midway Road 2 LLC for the expansion of the mini warehouse at 1281 Midway Road, finding that the criteria outlined in Section 13111 of the city zoning code, and the use is existing and conforms to the comprehensive plan.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this project this evening? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close as well. We'll move on to the reported department head, staff, and consultants. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes and communications? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for the council to receive minutes A through I, or excuse me, L, and communications M through R.
So motion is second. Discussion? Did you have a discussion, Stan?
Yep. I was just gonna say, I see we had a IT steering committee meeting. So hopefully have more progress other than what was in the minutes, but it's good to see that that's finally back.
Should I comment on the minutes, Becky? So the minutes are purposely somewhat vague because we do not want a ready-made trail for hackers to understand what types of systems and software we use within the IT department. So if you do have questions, you should talk to Jennifer about what's going on. The minutes will be fairly vague. Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to do a shout out to the police department for the Wisconsin law enforcement accreditation group. They were an applicant for reaccreditation, and it looks like they were successful in getting that again. And congratulations, Chief, and to your whole department. I believe, did you say last time, there's only 45 departments in the state that have this? So that's, that's quite an accomplishment. So thank you and your department for that.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenek.
Because we had public hearings on these two, I'll say eight and nine. And the planning commission's recommendations on 12. What's that leave us, Mayor?
Alderman Nichols also has some requests.
Item three, please.
Alderman Taylor?
Was eight and nine removed? I'm going to...
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
So what's remaining is item one, which is the common council minutes. Item two, the election inspectors for the City of Manassia for 2022 and 2023. The proposed changes to the employee personnel handbook, number five. Number seven is the LTE public health nurse position to be covered by COVID-19 grant funding. Item 10 is the CSM for parcel 76202 and 76105 and 76100. And item 11 is the CSM dividing parcel 5491 into two parcels. Is there a motion for those items, then? Alderman Sevenek?
I'll make a motion for those items.
There's a motion, a second.
Did the clerk get them?
Numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item three, the developer has asked that we either table or hold that item till the next meeting. I don't know if anyone wishes to make a motion. I had talked to Alderman Nichols about it. I'm assuming that's why she wanted to do that. Is that correct? Alderman Nichols?
What is the date of their next meeting? January 4?
Yes, it's Tuesday.
I'll move to postpone the development agreement by and between the City of Manassia and Atkins Development Group for the development of the Woodlake cottages' development until January 4.
So motion is second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item four is the Lake Park Villa's dam structure. Do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to accept the payment for a contract unit number 2021-03. That's for the villa's dam structure with Michael's Construction, Inc., in the amount of $388,500.
So the recommendation is rejecting this bid?
Right.
And I think you said accept.
Remember in committee, we rejected it.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so the...
It's to reject.
Okay, so the motion...
The motion is to reject...
To reject.
...the, the contract unit number 2021-03 for the villa's dam structure with Michael's Construction, Inc., in the amount of $388,500. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. There's a motion, a second by Alderman Taylor. Any discussion? This one we should have a roll call vote on, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item six is the cost of living increase. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at this time, I'd like to make the motion to approve a 2% cost of living slash wage salary increase for the non-representative employees effective December 26, 2021, as included in the 2022 budget.
So motion is second by Alderman Nichols. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item eight is a special use permit for TriCityAuto. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, hold on. We need to, we need to do this for you. Where are you? There you are.
Right there. I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit as presented by TriCityAuto for the automotive sales and service facility at 1415 Appleton Road, parcel number 6-01651-00, finding that all criteria outlined in Section 13-1-11B have been met, and the use is existing and conforms to the comprehensive plan.
So motion is second by Alderman Grotty. Any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, I was out on the site the other day, and would they have to put in site, would they have to put in sidewalk at this time?
No, they would not.
Pardon me?
No, they would not.
They would. Why, why would that be if we were bringing the property up to, you know, QuickTrip has it and went to the south?
I could leave that to Director Youngworth to respond, but I believe until the time that the entire street would be urbanized, that there's ditches all along through that entire corridor, and because of those ditches, in order to put sidewalk in, we would actually have to pipe, pipe that ditch and then regrade that entire site. So I think that would be part of a future city project or a state project, should we get to that point.
Because QuickTrip has it on the corner, and they have their retention ponds and everything there. And I thought the sidewalk would be to the, maybe possibly to the east of the ditch.
And I, and I believe that's because that was part of the urbanization project of, of Midway and the 441 project, was to take basically that, that sidewalk and that project, that urbanization down south through that property.
Okay. And then also, on the property, I noticed they've really expanded to the east on the back of their property. And is there a line that, to the, to the east that, are they going to their further this boundary, or to, they have blacktop and then they have gravel after that? So are they going to expand out to where the gravel ends?
So are you talking this site to the north?
I'm talking, the entrance is on the west side of the property, correct?
Yes. And so you, but, but that gravel area that it was expanded is to the north? Is that what you're referring to?
To the east. If you drive in from the west entrance straight ahead, you're going east, and at the back there, there's...
At the back of the lot?
Quite a ways with the gravel at this time.
So if you look at the site plan, the building will actually be all the way on the backside of the property. And then that whole lot will basically be paved with a hard surface parking lot.
Okay. And then there's a, a kind of a cream-colored garage back there. Is that part of their property, too?
So there's actually a, a property line that cuts between those, and that, that building on the north side there is actually in the village of Fox Crossing currently. But that property is part of the ongoing negotiations with the land exchange with the Fox...
Because the driveway, clearly there's two garage doors facing this property. And so if that's in Fox Crossing, the driveway entrances are on, on this property, on the TriCityAuto property, correct?
I, I can't speak intelligently exactly where the driveways are on that property.
Right. You go behind the building, and then you're going to the north, like you said. There's a garage there with two garage doors. It's a separate outbuilding, and the parking lot goes right up to the garages.
And again, I, it's located in the village of Fox Crossing. It is owned by the same owner. I believe there would be plans to demolish that, those facilities, that old house with this project. But again, currently, it's not in the City of Manassia.
Okay. And then directly on the east side of their building, they have a, it looks like a collection for oil, and there's probably 20, 30 tires stacked up out there. And the tank looks like it's below ground, below the surface by about a foot or two. Was there any recommendations with the, the tire storage outside and the oil collection container?
There was nothing noted on the, the site plan showing exterior storage of tires or, or, or oil, used oil. But that certainly, if, if you wanted to add that as a condition, that no exterior storage of, you know, waste products or automobile waste products may be allowed, that, that could be acceptable.
So we can add that, add that in?
Sure.
Okay. Mayor, at this time, could I make that amendment?
Okay.
I would like to make an amendment that there's no outside storage of automobile on, on the property.
Do we, I guess, what's the definition of automobile products?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna...
Would an automobile be considered an automobile product?
Yeah. Automobile products, okay. Used tires, used oil, used parts.
Sam, what would you like it to say? Tires, parts, oil, or just automotive parts?
We, we could say tires, parts, and other similar...
That's fine. Refuge? Attorney Captain?
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, they may have parts that they're using. Right?
Well, if they're expanding, you would think they'd wanna keep this stuff inside. I have pictures up here, it looks, you know, it's quite a mess.
So the, the waste, I think, when you defined it before as automobile waste products...
That's fine.
Probably would encompass all of that.
Okay. So the motion is to amend, to not allow outdoor storage of automobile waste products.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Do you have discussion on the amendment? No? And, and did you?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment? Or are you...
Nobody took my spot.
Oh. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is amended. And I believe Alderman Sevenek was up next.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Randy. I was kind of concerned about, seems like anytime there is an addition or whatever, there's requirements for a stormwater situation. Where do we lie with that?
So this site has a combination of stormwater treatment devices planned. They have permeable pavement. On the southwestern corner of the property, they have a dry detention basin and then permeable pavement. So as the site drains to the west, it's captured in that permeable pavement, and then it goes into that dry detention area for peak flow control before it goes out into the ditch, the roadside ditch. And one thing to add with the QuickTrip parcel, the roadside ditch is no longer there. They do have their onsite stormwater treatment, and then the sidewalk, I believe. And here, there is still a roadside drainage ditch that we cannot, we're not able to remove at this time until the road is urbanized and storm sewer is installed, storm sewer main is installed. But they are providing treatment on this site. And I do believe they have a small amount of treatment that is going to be captured in the regional facility. So they, like I said, it's a combination of items. There's gonna be a stormwater buy-in to the regional facility, and they're doing some onsite treatment.
And then my second part is, is kind of to piggyback on Alderman Taylor's question. In tonight's meeting pertaining to the boundary agreement, this particular property owner wishes to come into the City of Manassia with that property on the north. So with approval of that, then they would be coming into the City of Manassia by expanding their location.
Alderman Repela?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, I know James is talking about outdoor storage of, oh, I gotta go, my thing here. Outdoor storage of the oil and whatnot, the other material. Gauze Auto Body does a real nice job putting a fence around their stuff. Is there any way that we could just have them fence in their, their lot? Then we wouldn't see it.
So I guess the motion...
Just a thought.
Yeah, the motion on the table is no outside storage of automobile waste products. If it stated that any outside storage shall be screened within a fenced-in area or not visible from an adjoining property, that could certainly be an acceptable, acceptable amendment as well. But as it currently stands, it, it states no exterior storage. And again, there, there was not anything noted on the site plan, so I couldn't say specifically what they are looking at doing, but they do have a much larger facility here.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment. I'd like to offer amendment that this structure for TriCityAuto, number eight we're on, right? For number eight, for parcel 601651-00, has, has fencing to enclose their newly, newly brought up areas.
So...
To go along with...
If, if I may, it...
Go ahead, Sam.
I think what you exactly just stated was any exterior storage of automobile waste products shall be fully screened from off-premise?
Yes, correct.
And behind the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we do that?
So that would conflict with the...
Yeah.
That conflicts with the amendment that's already on the floor that says you cannot have anything...
That's because he beat me to my little buzzer here.
Yeah, so you would, I don't know how you get rid of the other amendment, then?
This was an exception. So if the exception is approved, then it correlates with the other one. No outside storage of automobile waste products except automobile...
Okay, I will accept it as germane if it's interpreted as except if they're screened. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second discussion on the amendment. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, I appreciate that, and I know what you're trying to do with that, but you have 30, 40 tires out there. Todd Drew at the Health Department, they fill with water, they breed mosquitoes, they have all sorts of problems with that, the Health Department does. So just putting a fence up doesn't stop that contamination of, of those tires. And they have a facility out there, a big 250-kali drum with a funnel on it, little cover on it, the water just runs into the, the oil, and it's just kind of a hazardous situation if you're expanding. Those things should be put in the garage and not add to a public health or an environmental problem. So that's what I was trying to get around with, saying that it should be stored on the inside, you know? So Mayor, I don't know how we can separate this, because I'm not in favor of voting for the fenced area because it still has all the exposure to the elements.
This is a second amendment, so this is an amendment, so we'd vote on this separately. And if it fails, then yours would hold that nothing can be stored outside. If it passes, then...
Okay, thanks, thanks for that explanation.
Sure.
Okay. That's all I was trying to do, Randy, was to stop the environmental problems. Thank you.
So we're gonna have a roll call on this one, but Haley needs to get it up on the screen here for a moment. Just put, no. I meant, I would put amend to include exception for outdoor storage fenced? Something to that effect? There you go. However, the attorney would like it to say. Could you have a discussion on the amendment yet? Go ahead, Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, okay, I'm a little bit confused also, but I second for a discussion for Randy. But, um, so Randy, I'm not sure, okay, what Alderman Taylor's, we already passed that to be everything inside indoors. I guess I'm not understanding what the fence would be for.
So what this, what this would allow is they would have to store everything inside unless it's fully screened. So they would be allowed to store things outside if it was fully screened from view.
Okay, so they don't have to store everything inside, then?
No.
They could do both, or whatever.
Yeah, but they would have to screen it if they were going to store things outside.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sevenek?
The reason I would be in favor of this is that businesses like this, especially now that they're going to be expanding... businesses like this, especially now that they're going to be expanding their auto shop, is that they do, they don't keep those out there permanently. They have X amount before a pickup. So they're not gonna have someone pick up every other week because they got 10 tires. So maybe right now, because of weather or whatever, there might be more tires out there than usual. To me, this is more of, if it's an issue of that, like what James is concerned with, then our own Health Department needs to go out there and address it. And this way, at least as a business, they're able to store their products outside as long as it's environmentally safe. So I would think that this is, this would be good. I see both sides of it, but as a professional business, they usually have procedures that they follow when recycling oil and recycling tires.
Alderman Taylor?
I'm comfortable with the outside storage end of it, but not with the tires and not with the oil, anything else. I don't care if they store the car parts or whatever they need to out there, but certainly, I was looking at the health and the environmental issue. And we can't send our Health Department out there all the time to check on things, you know? And who knows when they put tires out there last, or how many they allow out there. So this just opens it back up to where we're at right now. And they're expanding. Here's an opportunity to bring things in, to conform with how we think it should be. And so I can't support just the fencing, 'cause that does nothing about the environment or the health. Thank you.
Alderman Linkin?
Thank you, Mayor. One more question here for Director Christine. So, I mean, our Todd, what do I wanna say? Let's just say, making rounds, he would make a round to check the inside of that. Fencing, wouldn't he, to make sure everything is environmentally covered, oil and things like that? Or would he not go, is that not where he would go into, to look, take a look?
So you're asking specifically, would he go inside the fencing?
Yes. To make sure everything, oil barrels, everything covered up? Or is that just, would that just be a complaint-driven deal?
Yeah, he more so would be responding to a complaint in a situation like that, so that would be his role.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, what's on the floor right now is the amendment. If we could have a roll call vote, please? Yes. Amendment to allow outdoor storage if it's screened. It's a tie? I will vote in favor. Who would've thought?
Motion carries five, four.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor now is to approve the special use permit and-
As amended.
As amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote on that.
One moment. Motion carries eight, zero.
Item nine. Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, I would like to present the special use permit as presented for Midway Road Two LLC for the expansion of the mini warehousing at 1281 Midway Road, parcel number 6-01654-00, finding that all the criteria outlined in section 13-1-11B have been met, and the use is existing, and it conforms to the comprehensive plan.
So motion is second. Any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say as one of the original council members that we felt we needed an industrial park in the city of Manasha, and we really didn't have the property for it. So we created a, more of an executive business park. And of course, there's one particular spot, there's storage units, which I don't think should've been built there in the first place. And, but when you look at the map, and the map makes it pretty much away from everything else, and you don't really see it. I'm not gonna quibble over this one. And therefore, I'll vote in favor of it, but it's just that, you know, here we are again. It's like more mini, mini storage units, so. But I will be in favor of it. It did go through the Planning Commission, and I believe it was unanimous, so.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, does the party that owns the building in front own this in the back?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Are they planning on adding storage to the back of the building? 'Cause they did a nice job peening the whole building, but the back isn't taking care of it all. Are they adding onto that with the storage units?
So the storage units are completely behind, they're not-
I see that. I went out there and took a good look at it. But I noticed that, are they gonna be adding from the building out?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And how do they get away with not having a hard surface back there all this time?
I can't respond to the exact timing of when that gravel was put in, or even potentially when this property was annexed at this stage in comparison to when that ordinance came in effect.
And on the east side of this property, there's probably a foot and a half of difference between the level of the two properties. And there's tremendous amount of erosion going on on that foot and a half that's right between the two gravicles up to that area. So would they be putting in some sort of a wall or something, certainly a curb? Or blacktop is gonna do anything to stabilize that?
So the entire site, I believe, will be, possibly Director Youngworth can chime in, will be regraded. And the entire site will drain to the south end of the property. And then that south end of the property will go into that existing neighboring stormwater pond. So they'll have an agreement, they have an existing agreement for that stormwater pond, and then that stormwater pond will act as the regional pond for those properties.
Right where their gravel ends, there's that much of a difference between the neighboring property, and it's all dirt that's washing away.
We're still going back and forth with them on the site plan on finalizing things. But at this point in time, they are expanding. They're gonna be reconstructing that pond and redoing the grading. So I think a lot of that's going to get cleaned up with this reconstruction work. They're also adding a drainage swale behind the new proposed mini storage. So again, I think that'll help a lot with that surrounding drainage. You're still gonna have a drop-off off of that existing parking on the neighboring parcel, you know, to the pond. But I think a lot of this new work should probably clean up a lot of that erosion on that pond.
And then to the north of the existing storage buildings, where the gravel is up to, and it's about a four-foot, which isn't secured whatsoever. It's just dirt, weeds that tall. And certainly, there should be something addressed for that, too. I don't see the, just blacktopping here is gonna help anything unless there's some supporting walls or blocks or something put in those property elevation problems. Has that been addressed on the north side of that property?
So again, we're still, I think, as Laura had mentioned, still working on finalizing the exact grade of that site. But again, anything that we're doing here is going to be a great improvement. So the exact details of other properties outside of this property, we haven't looked-
Well, they're not gonna blacktop now. Can we postpone till you guys get to get all the details done here? It's kind of incomplete coming out at this time.
So again, the common council here is not looking at the exact details of the site plan. You are looking at specifically the special use permit. You can add conditions to that special use permit. But in addition, the actual details of the site plan has already been approved by the City Planning Commission. And part of that grading and stormwater work, oftentimes by the time it gets to this stage, because they don't know officially if this project is gonna be approved, they have it designed to a certain point, and then work diligently with our staff before they have their site improvement agreements locked in to finalize that detail. But really, to allow the special use permit to get approved allows them to go out and get their building permits to start to finalize construction drawings, to move that project forward, and then go get state-approved plans-
Have you been out on site?
What's up?
Have you been out on site?
Yes.
Okay. And you've seen these areas, to the north?
Again, I can't say, I didn't know your concerns beforehand, so I did not specifically go out and look at exactly what you're discussing. I have been on site, but I have not, we would've needed to know how to done.
You know, if it was even close, I wouldn't have any concerns. But boy, it's, there's definitely a problem out there with the elevations. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
Okay, so I'm back to the drainage and that. And like you said, this is kind of preliminary, and there's kind of like this little, these different levels and that, are they going to increase the larger pond? They are?
Yes, they are.
Okay, 'cause according to the drawing, I just see it like spilling in or something.
I wish I could answer a little bit better to Alderman Taylor's questions.
You can do that.
I don't have the drainage and grading plan in front of me, and I'm trying to dig for it here quickly. But if you look at the plan that you have in front of you, the dashed line with the circles, that's actually storm sewer and catch basins. So they're adding drainage collection points throughout this parcel, and then also on the far north end. So between those two, where you're gonna have those adjustments and grades, they're trying to capture some of that water to get it to the pond. So the pond is being reconstructed, the grades are gonna get cleaned up there. On the south end, they're doing a drainage swale to drain into the pond, so that'll clean up that end. And then again, they're adding these collection points near abutting those other parcels to get that water to the pond and around those storage buildings. So I think this will be a significant change in cleanup to this. I just can't answer too specifically to the drainage plan without having it in front of me at this time.
I have a better idea now, after you explained it, so thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Sam, will we be allowing other storage out in this area? You know, it's kind of our pristine property out there. Right to the back is our commercial industrial park.
The zoning code would not allow, like, a vacant piece of property to construct one of these buildings. The exception is specific to a property that has an existing facility that was constructed prior to January 1st of 1991. So that language was added at whatever time, specifically for whatever reason. So that language is specifically why this property would be allowed to. Otherwise, this type of building would only be allowed on an industrial property.
If you could make a note to why they fixed up their building, but the back of it looks horrendous, and this is where these new storage sheds are gonna be. I thought they might be adding onto it, but that should be taken care of, too, or cleaned up. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item 12 is the final plat of Woodland Lakes cottages. Do we have a motion? Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the approval of the final plat of the Woodland Lakes cottages subdivision, Atkins Development Group LLC, as presented, and finding that the plat conforms to the municipal ordinance, the city comprehensive plan, and surrounding development with all the options listed on our packet A through K.
So motion is second. Director Schrader?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so all of these corrections were done prior to this plat being placed into the packet. So we would not need any of the conditions. It would just be as presented, as kind of noted in the memo, if that is acceptable.
Okay. Was there a second?
Yes, Tom was-
There's a motion is second by Alderman Grady for the plat as presented.
As presented, yes.
Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll for December 3rd through 16th. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of December 3rd through December 16th, 2021, in the amount of $923,725.27.
There's a motion is second by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
I did have one more. Jennifer was kind enough to call me back. And I did have one more on top of that, and now I can't find it. But it had something to do with Sheboygan County, with the Public Works. And now I can't find it. Do you know which one? 734. That's why I'm still scrolling. There it is. Check 73401. It's Highway Services, it says. Where's your big stack of papers like this that Tom used to bring in?
We have upgraded to virtual.
I can't answer to that. Go ahead, Director Sassman, but-
Sam?
I can definitely check on this one. The subaccount that's listed is our department supplies type of account. So I can check with Deputy Director Gordon on this one, and I can get back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2021 through 23 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated December 16th, 2021.
Is there a second? So motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
There is one license that is recommended for denial. I don't know if Mr. Bouchelle is here this evening. So I don't know if you wish to address the council at this point?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this guy is my nephew. He, by mistake, he put the- Thank you for an opportunity. So this guy is my nephew. In his application, as my understanding, he put the- In his application, as my understanding, he put the no previous citation. There was one previous citation, I believe. And that's why he, if I mistake, he need to correct it to yes instead of no. If it is okay to the committee, that's why we are here. That was innocently, he did something wrong with the supposed to be yes previous citation. He marked it no. That was the reason.
So Chief, did you want to comment on this too? We can get your mic back there somewhere.
So yeah, the denial that, or the recommendation for denial based upon the council's rules, stemmed from the fact to what I believe was just kind of explained, that the application was not filled out correctly because question number, I think it's, number five, have you ever been convicted of a violation law statute ordinance pertaining to the sale of alcohol to an underage person? And Mr. Pudell was cited in July of 2021 for that violation and subsequently did not pay for that violation and had a warrant issued to them for their arrest or for paying that fine at the time of the application being filed with the city. Since that time, we did check our records and the fine and warrant have been satisfied. But that's, the inaccurate application is the reason for the denial based upon the council's rules.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant or the chief? Or would someone like to make a motion, one way or the other? Alderman Sevanek?
Are you able to read the application?
Yes, he should be.
Yeah?
He should be able to read, yes.
But do you think that maybe it was just, he probably didn't quite understand?
I think so.
I'm starting to believe that myself, so I'll move for approval of his license.
Thanks.
Is there a second? There's a motion in two seconds?
As long as, as long as, you know, and I wanted to continue. I wanted to make sure that the fine was paid and everything was recorded and the chief indicated it was, so I'm satisfied.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Alderman Taylor?
I'm surprised that you're speaking for him. Doesn't he understand English?
Because of the accent, maybe he understands.
I can't hear you.
Because of the accent I'm speaking, he doesn't understand somehow.
Serving alcoholic beverages in this community to minors is a very, very serious offense. And if he can't understand that, and he's already made a violation, I don't see any light on his application. He lied to the police department, said he had no further violations before. So that's one, it's not funny, sir. That's two strikes. And apparently, he doesn't understand. When you fill out an application, it's a violation of our laws up here. And that's why the chief is asking us to deny it at this time. And certainly, there's two violations here.
Did you buy two? Did you buy one, two? Only one? Here's a, here's a only one, I think. Is it to me?
That's all I have to say.
Alderman Sevanek?
I think it's not fair to say that the chief is telling us not to approve this. I think that the chief gave us his statements as far as council rules. And he and his department followed the process and noticed that a payment had not been paid and that it was in a violation. I don't know, is it against the number to not allow an individual a license based on one citation? In this case?
It would be two. It's guideline four, where if an applicant provides false information, then it's the police department that determines if it was intentionally omitted from an application, if information wasn't completed properly.
Right.
And then they make a recommendation to deny it. Otherwise, if they think it was omitted due to an inadvertent mistake or excusable neglect, then they allow the applicant to resubmit a corrected. But apparently, in this case, they did not allow the applicant to complete a corrected one.
Okay, thank you. So like I had stated before, I just think, and I totally agree with what Alderman Taylor's saying. You have to take this serious. Serving, I mean, you have to, you see an old guy like me coming and you check his ID. So, but I do think that in this case, there was a misinterpretation and that we should allow him to continue his employment and allow him to have this license.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, I was just wondering, where would your nephew be employed if he was to get this license? Where would he be working? Where would you be working, sir?
If he don't have a license?
Okay.
No, no, if he, where does he need this license for his employment?
Where would he be employed, sir?
In the Minas, that Pride of Minas.
Where, sir?
Minas Amara.
It says 209 Racine Street on the application.
I didn't see it, sorry. Okay, is somebody going to be working, or is he going to be in there alone? Or is he going to be working in tandem with somebody else?
With somebody else, for now, he's working with somebody else.
Okay. I'm just wondering about his ability to understand English a lot of the time. So that was my concern, so, but I'm glad that he's working with somebody now.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
No, it's a, it's a marathon.
No, the Marathon Station, 209 Racine Street.
Right by the.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is, so you did not pay the fine. You did not pay the fine and you had a warrant for your arrest. My question is, why did you not pay the fine?
Do you, do you, did you pay the fine? Can I speak? That time I have two mistakes. One time, you know, just like one is liquid and one is cigarette. That time, we think we pay one, we pay one, then we think we pay everything. After that, we don't know about that, sir. Just we pay, there is like a two.
So you had two, two fines?
Yeah, just like a same time, just like a two fine. And just we think one, that cigarette or like alcohol, you know?
So if I may ask, Chief, he had two fines on him?
Just only, we find already paid in.
He's looking it up.
Yes, there were two citations issued, one for the alcohol and one for selling tobacco.
Were those issued at the same time, Chief?
Yes.
So you were issued the citations for both at the same time?
Yes.
You were handed to them the same time?
Yes.
And you only thought you needed to pay one?
Yeah, that time just, we paid that and.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Attorney Captain, did he lie on his application or misled us on his application?
When the police department filled out their letter, that is what they found? That is what the police department found? Alternatively, if they believe there was an inadvertent mistake or excusable neglect, then they allow the applicant just to submit a corrected application and then they just move on with the process. So in this particular case, and you'd probably have to ask the chief, but they, their determination was that it was intentionally omitted.
Okay. So we served underage people. We didn't pay your fine. You were found guilty of this violation and also failed to pay the citation amount for the violation. And you had a warrant out for your arrest unless you required a bond amount for $237. And then our guideline six says, and the police recommended that we don't give you a license. Guideline six says, if the police chief recommends denial of an operator's license application for the reason for denial must be clearly stated on the record and shall consist with the criteria outlined in the above guidelines for this council. And now we see there's three things you violated tonight already. So certainly, I'm not going to approve your license tonight for these violations in our community. And I don't think you take this serious enough. And I don't think you should be serving alcohol in our city at this time. Maybe in the future, but not at this time.
Okay, seeing no further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Steika, Attorney Captain, has twice mentioned guideline four and the fact that the applicant was not truthful on the application, but that if it was, if the police chief in the police department determines that the information was omitted inadvertently, that a mistake happened, the applicant may be allowed to submit a corrected application. And in this instance, are we to infer that that opportunity was not presented? Or that there is a reason that that didn't happen?
Good question. The reality is, when you have a person who has not paid for their fines and a warrant is issued for them, that generally assents to us of a lack of cooperation. And the inference that was made by Lieutenant Thorne in our department, then is that this person wasn't complying with the system throughout this entire process. This is a property that we've had chronic problems with, with underage alcohol sales. And this incident didn't stem from a sting. This actually stemmed from one of our officers observing in a legal transaction take place where a customer who was clearly under 21 went into the business and came out with alcohol and cigarettes. So the juvenile that made the purchase, as well as the person who made the sales, were all arrested out of this incident and then the subsequent warrant. So based upon those circumstances and some of the pretext of the issues that we've been receiving complaints out in the community, yes, it was our inference that there was no attempt to comply with the process. Again, there isn't a specific tie that we can though put to it. So that's where, I guess, you folks have that ability to determine, now speaking with the applicant, if he truly did not understand the application, then that is certainly within your discretion.
Thank you for that explanation. This particular individual was cited less than six months ago for selling tobacco and alcohol to an underage person. I'm confident that the person understands the law when it comes to serving and selling to underage individuals. And this person was caught within the last six months. And it took a warrant being issued for the citation to be paid. This is a recent violation. And therefore, I, for those reasons, I do not support issuing a license to this individual at this time.
I know the owner has many stores throughout the Fox Valley. And if other municipalities want him to serve in their community, fine. But we have six guidelines here until somebody changes them.
That's not a factor.
And it seems like every time, we slow walk this thing and violate our own guidelines. But he has many stores throughout this whole area and he can go work in another municipality as far as I am concerned. Thank you.
Yeah, we should stick to the applicant. Chief, I have a question. It sounded like what he tried to say is that he paid one of the citations and thought he paid the citations. And there were actually two citations because it was for someone being underage?
Yeah, so two citations were issued to him, one for the sale of the tobacco and one for the sale of the alcohol.
And one was paid already?
They're both paid now, correct. And it appears that one was paid prior to.
Right.
The court appearance are somewhere in there. And then the other one, I'm guessing, just from the way that the court generally works, he probably didn't show up for a court that's listed as a default judgment warrant that issued at that point for that second violation.
So my thinking here is that he thought probably that he paid it, but there were actually two citations and he didn't pay the second one. And that's why there was a warrant issued for him. I still think that there's a lot of miscommunications here. And like I said before, you need to check everybody. It does not matter, if they look 50, you need to check them. Period. Cigarettes, alcohol, you have to have that ID.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you very much, Mayor. My concern is, I just don't know if you were able to read a license.
Yes, I can, I can do, sir.
My issue. Do they scan these licenses or do they read them? Okay. I don't have a license with myself.
I could hear him say it as well.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? The vote is for four. I am going to side with our police department. They did recommend denial and I believe it's important to listen to our staff and agree with what they are recommending.
Motion fails four five.
So.
Just one, because today is my birthday also, so next, this year I do my best or that.
Chief, did you want to explain to them outside the meeting?
The chief will talk to you outside.
So the chief can talk to you outside the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, item three is the Strong Neighborhoods Minashe program update. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
I don't want to make a motion at this time. I'd like to give Alderman.
Alderman, are you an Alderman now, Sam?
I just demoted you again. Allow Sam, I think he wanted to speak a little bit. We might postpone or add an amendment yet, so we'll see what.
Director Schrader?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to kind of just skim through here. So as we progressed, obviously, in the Strong Neighborhoods program, we have certainly made changes. A lot of those changes have come in kind of December of the year, kind of going into the next year to make sure we're kind of hitting the ground running with kind of everything in working order. So this past year, the Housing Authority did see a couple of requests come through in addition to some requests for extensions and appeals requests. So they had kind of directed staff to bring back language to, for them to consider recommending to the common council for their consideration. So this has been discussed at the last few meetings with the Housing Authority. Last Monday, December 13th, they actually reviewed these changes, made modifications and actually recommended the council consider this. Now, I will say, I do strongly apologize. I do not have the update as I would have hoped to have today. I did mention this also to the Housing Authority because they also requested for it. Basically, just a summary of the projects that have been kind of completed. Basically, just a summary of the projects that have been kind of completed, the dollars and everything. I informed them that I will certainly have that at the next meeting, now that our new planner's on board, as well as be able to provide that to you guys in the coming. So basically, just a quick overview of kind of some of the projects, some of the changes. So page four of that document or 144, 141 of the overall packet, under the curb appeal application, there was some conversation this summer regarding loans or grants. We did stick with a grant program, but there was some remnant language in there regarding loans. So that is just kind of a cleanup effort. Under major renovations, page six of the program or 143 of the PDF, we had noted or the, it was discussed kind of the, the time to, to complete a project as well on page, excuse me, seven and 144, the time to complete the project and then the transfer of ownership. So on page six, it's noted that homes that are or will be occupied within one year of loan distribution from the completion of a project would be able to be transferred. So that forgivable loan, let's say there's an investor comes in and instead of investing into their property and putting it up for rent, they invest in that property and put it up for sale, they could transfer that forgivable loan and try to kind of sell that house at that, in that manner. In the one year from distribution, we realized that that's really a tight timeline for some of these projects that may take a year. So we wanted to consider one year from the completion of the project. In letter H there, the substantial completion within previously six months of the loan approval, again, these major renovation projects are oftentimes very much larger projects. So the, the Housing Authority did discuss that and wanted to extend that out to 12 months for, for some of these larger projects. Now, it was kind of going back and forth whether or not just to allow more extensions. And ultimately, they, they really wanted to stick with, or their recommendation was to stick with one extension, but for the major renovations versus the curb appeal to allow that, those projects to, to go out to 12 months versus six months. Kind of continuing on, property acquisition or special projects, so this is page eight of that program document, page 145 of the PDF or the council packet. It was noted at the, at the budget hearing regarding this special project of acquiring a portion of the Appleton Water Plant property and whether that was the dollars that were put into the program were specifically just for the acquisition or the acquisition as well as infrastructure insulation. The intent was always, as we discussed, both, to drive that lot pricing down, to make those lots fit within that affordable range. So this language here was an attempt to, to clarify that, adding and assist in the cost of adding to the connectivity of the entire community. I realized when I spoke with one of the Aldermen today, they were like, you know, that still doesn't say, you know, spending money on infrastructure, but that was the intent of that language. Again, because I believe that was the intent of the overall TIF six closure at that time. Continuing on, we have two additions within additional program details. One is an appeals process and two, project extension requests. Again, we had a, a project that staff had denied and the, the applicant felt that there was some, some miscommunication or some underlying details. So we did kind of consider that at a Housing Authority meeting, and they did, they did grant that, but, but noted, we really need to have official language placed in here. So that's where that was added as a recommendation from that, that there would be an official form and provided all the documentation that is needed and that they would have to be present. And then there would be a, a small $50 fee, again, just because of the extra time to do that. And then lastly, the project extension. Again, prior to that project being completed, this is again adding specific language as to how that would work. The Housing Authority could consider up to one extension. Again, there would be in a form that would have to be filled out with all the proper documentation. That form would have to be received prior to the end of that timeframe. And then basically, the, it notes, the Housing Authority shall consider the applicant worked in good faith to start the project upon approval and actively pursue the completion of the project in a timely manner. And if the project was not commenced, materials have not been ordered, the applicant fails to show proper documentation, the extension would be denied, and the applicant could at that time resubmit for the program. And again, there would be another application fee of $50 with that. So one of the things, I guess, I mentioned to Alderman Sevenik earlier today was that we would certainly like feedback on this. We could even move this forward. But one of the things that, that I did note, because Alderman Sevenik had requested or discussed it with me earlier today, was the reimbursement process. And looking at the program later this afternoon, we have a specific reimbursement process for the curb appeal, but it's, it's lacking a little bit for the major renovation. Now, we have our standard policy that we've been following for every single project. As you may recall, major renovation requires a contracted work. So basically, our policy has been, we're, we're the last dollars in. So you have to, let's say there's a $15,000 project and the city pays one-third of that project, you have to submit an invoice to us that 10 grand was paid. And then the city would reimburse the final $5,000 via an invoice from the company directly to that company and kind of complete that project. Different from a curb appeal, the curb appeal, because it's fully a reimbursable grant opportunity, that they have to submit fully, that they fully paid for that project, and then we reimburse that actual property owner. So at that time, with the curb appeal, it's completed, it's, it's fully done. And then with the, with the major renovation, again, it's, it's usually a completed prod, project or very close to it, if there's some sort of progress payment that needed to be made. But again, we are not first dollars in because we want to make sure that project is well underway and, and, and being invested by that, by that owner.
Alderman Sevenik.
So I still remember when we first started this, that Sam said, I'm sure that this will be coming back to the council from time to time because we're going to try to make it a better process. So I think we need to postpone this for one more meeting so that we can add that additional language. I don't want to attempt to try to do it through an amendment at this point.
Is that a motion?
So yes, I'd like to postpone it for the next meeting.
So there's a motion to postpone until January 4th? Is there a second? It's a motion, a second. Any discussion on the postponement? Randy, are you?
No, no, nothing with the postponement.
Okay. Okay. So you can, well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? So you can get that information from Sam then in between now and January 4th, hopefully? And this is, this is postponed, so we're going to move on to the next item. Item four is the Village of Fox Crossing Land Exchange Proposal. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
I don't know if we had a recommended motion or not, but Sam did. There were two maps omitted in this process. I called him, obviously, you know, I called him today, and these were not in there. Oops. I don't need them. So just so everybody has it. It is, it is part of the agreement and part, it just, they just did, they just for some reason didn't appear, so not any big deal. But the city, QuickTrip, some of their representatives, Fox Crossing, I feel, we had multiple, multiple meetings on this going back and forth. And I really sincerely believe that this now is the best recommendation that came out of this. They appear to be now satisfied, and I'll move for approval of the boundary agreement.
So is there a second? So there's a motion, a second. And I believe what the motion is, is to accept the offer and direct staff to create an official boundary agreement under Wisconsin Statute 660301.
You, you did say staff, right?
Yes, staff.
Right.
Correct. Okay. The attorney is saying yes.
Yes, because really it's her.
Yes. Well, we, we need an official.
I didn't know if you wanted, that's why I didn't say.
Yeah. I just wanted you to know that this is phase one of the process, that it will come back again. Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, could you explain what happens tonight? Let's see, this is accepted and then what, what processes happen?
Do you want to do that, Attorney Captain? Just so it's correct?
Sure. What would happen is I would be working with the attorney for, well, actually, that is a good question. Now that I think of it, I, let me ask Mr. Schrader if there was a vote by the village board that he is aware of. I am not aware of a vote.
My understanding, it was done within closed session, and the, the understanding verbally was that it was an understanding, not a vote in closed session.
All right, so in that case, that means that, well, from a legal perspective, we are negotiating with ourselves at the moment because the city of Manassia did provide and did take a vote and provided the village something. So what, if, if there isn't a vote, Fox Crossing, then, you know, I guess would have to vote. And if approved, then I would be working with the attorney and finishing up some kind of an agreement. What has been provided thus far is the proposal that the city of Manassia gave to Fox Crossing, and I did put that into a written agreement. And I had sent that over to Attorney Ross Meisel, the village attorney. So that, that's where we are at, but we would have to make some adjustments to that, obviously, based on the things that would be added and subtracted. But we wouldn't do that until Fox Crossing.
Okay.
Authorizes that.
And then following that, there'd be a public hearing?
Following that, there would have to be a public hearing, correct? Yes.
With a 30-day notice?
In each of the communities, yes. That's correct.
And then we would vote on that final agreement, correct?
Correct, yes.
I didn't hear that last part, Mayor.
And then we would vote on that final agreement again in both communities.
After the public hearings on it?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
So there will be one more vote on this in the city of Manassia as well? Yes.
Assuming the village would approve it in the first place.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Did you have something else, Stan?
I just wanted to add that after our last meeting, basically, and I agree with the city attorney, that we need to see a vote come from them, but that it was very clear from Dale Youngquist that both attorneys get together and draft the final agreement for a boundary.
Alderman Nichols?
Let me just jot down a note here so I don't forget to say something.
You can have this one if you want, Stan.
It is concerning to me that we still don't have a vote on the record from the Village of Fox Crossing. As I said last time, they have yet to have any discussions or make an offer in open We have done so. And I think that should be of concern to us, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment. What we have before us today is, in my eyes, somewhat different, significantly different than what we offered to them in open session. Director Schrader, I'm, I'm going to forego some of the details and speak in general terms here, but as I recall, what we had sent over to them and what we agreed upon unanimously in open session was basically, there was a five swap, a five property swap. We would, five would come into the city, five would go to the village. Each would get what they wanted. Each would give up a little and eat, and then each would get a little more, essentially. The last one, it, the values were fairly equal, both in acreage and land value, with the city coming in a tad bit lower on both of those, correct?
I'm trying to pull it up right now, but I, I believe that, that is accurate. The, the exact number of parcels might have been off, but their value slightly was higher, their acreage was slightly higher. And there was, yes, the payment.
And let's be honest, remnant right-of-way isn't exactly anything to write home about. And I mean, it, it's important, but it's not really worth anything to us, but we're willing to accept that as, as part of our, as part of our offer. And that offer also included some cash over a period of 20 years, correct? From the city to the village.
Correct.
In the amount of?
$120,000.
Over 20 years?
20 years.
Over 20 years. $6,000 annually. What we got back from them was basically them giving us what we need to make a development happen and getting what they want. They want five parcels. We would get two and some right-of-way. We also take a significant hint, hit on the value of what's being traded in their offer. They did lessen the cash a little bit, but there's still cat, a cash component. And so my concern is that what's here is not equal or close to equal in proportion, and it contains cash. Now, we have talked frequently up here about how the city subsidizes village services, thereby subsidizing their taxes. And I, for one, just speaking for myself, have issue with subsidizing their taxes with cash now as well. And I still don't think it's, it's right for us to not have a vote from them in open session about where they actually stand on this. And I would hate to waste our city attorney's time engaging in drafting an agreement when we really don't know that there is one. We really don't know. And so tonight, I would be comfortable postponing this item until we have a vote from the Village of Fox Crossing Board that they agree to these terms. Anything other than that, I'm out at this point. I think patience is key to this. I know everyone's patience is, has been worn down, and I know staff and other folks have put a lot of time and effort into this. And I'm failing to see a lack of good faith effort on the village board's part at this time.
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't disagree with what Alderman Nichols is saying. I don't think the city attorney would waste her time anyways until she had assurances that there was an agreement from both communities. But if we don't do anything, then they will say, well, the city didn't agree to this. That's what I'm concerned about. And the reduction, by the way, we agreed to in the past was 120. And the reduction, by the way, we agreed to in the past was $120,000. Now it's $60,000 over 10 years. And I'm going to tell you why. And I think most of you guys know, they want Airport Road. And basically, the third day after we made that change in our capital improvement budget, I got a call. And our residents aren't getting the calls or calling us. It's their residents because they're using it. And so that's why they reduced it by... To $60,000. So I think we do need... I totally understand where Alderman Nichols is coming in with this. They need to be more open. We have always been open. I'm surprised that I even said what I just said about Airport Road, but I'm being upfront about it. So I think we do need to approve this. And let... I know I gave her this analogy before, but I think we're on the one-yard line here. And the last thing we need to do is fumble. You know, let's drive this in and get this $3 million project taken care of. We've done so much more with developers to get a development that's less than this. Why can't we do it with our neighbors? Because this is not just going to benefit Manasha. And I've said it to them several times. This is going to benefit Fox Crossing also because we share the boundaries over there with a lot of the residents. What will go there is a top-notch organization that pays their people extremely well, good-paying jobs, quality products, quality service, and a clean area that takes away kind of what I consider, to a degree, an eyesore and an area that has so much more potential. So I hope that we can vote on this and say, yes. I think part of the problem here was you got a letter from Fox Crossing. You made it seem like there's... But that's not the case. What they were doing was trying to reassure, are we on the same page here? Is this... Are these the terms you agreed to? And I think that's what it was about. And so I being in those meetings, those are the terms that we agreed to. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. You know, the problem we have in today's society is we can't and we're not willing to compromise a little bit. But I think in the long run, this is going to benefit both communities. And in my opinion, this should have been built two years ago already. So I'm going to ask that we not postpone it. We vote on it so that Fox Crossing knows that we're serious about this so that they can go into open session and show us that they're serious about it.
Alderman Langton.
Thank you, Mayor. So today I had a good, nice conversation, about an hour, with Alderman Sevenik. And along with Alderman Beck Nichols, I had a concern with money. To me, even, we went from $120,000 down to $60,000. That's cash. So to me, that's called ransom. And with all that, though, I will bite my chin and vote for this. I have one question, though, that I'm curious of. And this is for Director of Public Works, Laura. How much of Midway Road do... Does the city own?
You mean Airport?
Airport Road. Airport Road, no, we don't.
I made that same mistake before.
How much do we... How much of Airport Road does the city of Manasha own?
So the segment from Racine to Mayor, our portion is 34.5%.
Okay. So that is correct and on here. All right, thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, what's this project worth to us? I said, I heard numbers like $2.5, $3 million.
And I'm assuming you're meaning the possible development on Racine and Ninth Street? So again, there... I have not seen any written documentation. I have not seen more than a concept. If it would be a sizable convenience center development, if it got to that point of being constructed on that site. We did do an average of similar facilities across the valley, the two communities. And that roughly came out to $1.8 million. There's a facility located in the city of Manasha currently. That's closer to three. So we were kind of using the $2 to $2.5 million range.
You know, this has taken a long time. We're all frustrated with it. When we do TIF agreements, there's a lot of things in there I don't agree with, especially the people I want to do it have enough money to just go and pay for it. I don't think QuickTrip's going to ask for a TIF on this. And certainly, as I think back a year and a half ago, Alderman Ann Schmidt warned us that she worked with this community when she was elected official at another community and how that would go. And pretty much out of exactly how she said. And I think what Alderman Sevenik said, I think we're a goal in inches here. We're right on the goal line. And we have their playbook now. We have their playbook in our hand. So we're all connected at so many angles on the east side. We can just take out our playbook when it's on the other way. And we can ask for the same thing that they asked for. And we can play it that way, too. So we have their playbook in our hand. And $2.5 million, $2 million, great project. It's going to enhance this corridor for Manasha, especially with Calder Stadium there and people coming in to go to Calder Stadium. And it's going to be a great business for the community to use, much closer than the 47 and Midway or the Highway 10 and 114 Center. So to help the people that are closer in town around the... Especially around the high school and that. So I think we should move forward and let's see what happens here. We're planning to put our feet to the fire on this one. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Something came up at the last meeting that we talked about this. And it raised a question in my mind. And it came up again tonight. And that is that somehow someone or some group of people here were part of creating this schedule of parcel transfers, this offer outside of a regular council meeting. Like I... So we, as a council, agreed to send this offer, not this one, but our offer on November 15th. We did that in open session here as a body.
So...
And I thought that this is what we were getting back from them as a counter to that. But I'm hearing that something else took place and another offer was agreed to outside of this.
So Fox Crossing and the city met with the last agreement that you were talking about?
Mm-hmm.
And they brought that to their board? And their board returned this back to us? And Sam did speak to some others about this as well?
Well, if I may, this agreement, certainly, there's changes in here that seem strange. And if I can maybe just give the overall public in the council a kind of a brief summary of that, because I don't know if any of this talked about that. That a lot of the ongoing conversations, and it's noted right in that agreement or that counter offer, note the Nathan Yonkey residence. It was always our understanding, because we've had conversations with him, we've had emails from him, that he would like his house, his resident, to come into the city of Manasha. So the current vacant lot to the north is also owned by him.
On Racine Road.
On Racine Road. And the goal of that from him was to have both his house and that vacant lot under one ownership or under... Within one municipality. It's already under one ownership, so then he could combine the site and have a larger property. After this was kind of all heading forward similar to the previous discussed development or the previously discussed counter offer, right before their last meeting last Monday, we were made aware that Mr. Yonkey no longer wished to have his house within the city of Manasha. And he would like to stay in the village. Being a homestead, there would be certain abilities for him to reject, propose boundary agreement. So again, the boundary agreement would have to go through public hearing processes. And being a homestead property, he could, you know, file for consideration, if you will, which would slow down that entire process. So what we have here is that the village kind of looked at that and circled back. I don't think there was any outside agreement or outside negotiation being done. I know Alderman Sevenik mentioned a call from President Youngquist. And I don't know as if that was an agreement. I think that was a, here's where we landed because we've had previous conversations. Because I received a very similar call. And again, we stated, this has to go to the council because we can't give you a clear answer if we're going to approve or deny this. Now, again, as noted right on the letter, there was a village board meeting and they proposed the following counter offer. Again, that's kind of somewhat contradictory because we're hearing, okay, maybe they didn't take an official vote. But at the same time, I don't think there was any type of meddling with them from a city staff or another alderman or elected official standpoint.
And is this counter offer as presented tonight, is that the... Is that the same as, here's where we landed? What you just said? You said there were these conversations and here's where we landed as a result of some conversations that took place. Is this the same as where we landed?
This came out of the village board and last-minute notations by Mr. Yonkey. Again, we did not recommend this. We did not offer this. We did not suggest this. This went to their village board for consideration.
This went to their village board, not our offer?
Our offer went. This obviously was what came out. So again, last Tuesday, Wednesday, we received a call saying, here's what took place within the last night. And you will be receiving a counter offer based upon that discussion. And this is what that output is. So we just received this, or the mayor did last, was that last Wednesday? December 15th?
In that vicinity, yes.
I'm sorry, what?
In that vicinity, I don't know if it was Wednesday, Thursday, what day it was. But yeah, last week sometime.
Yes, it is becoming very apparent that we are negotiating with ourself here. And until I hear something publicly from the village board, I'm out.
Alderman Groudi.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, it seems like if we don't go forward with anything, they're going to keep coming back and keep changing these things. Every time we don't make a vote, we come... They come back with a whole new program. We've got to put our foot down and do something. This is ridiculous.
Alderman Sevenik.
And just so you know, my involvement was because it was requested by QuickTrip and by the real estate agent who handles these. And this real estate agent actually has an office in Manasha and one in Michigan that handles these deals. When he located in Manasha, he looked at the Fox Cities, Green Bay area, and he looked at the center. And he chose an office here in the city of Manasha. And apparently, he had watched a council meeting on this because he's concerned about it. And when Mr. Youngquist called me, it was because he was having difficulty getting hold of the mayor and Sam. So I grabbed my cellphone and the mayor answered immediately. So I asked him to call Mr. Youngquist. And we had a meeting, I think, the following day. And this is what he proposed to us. And I think it's... Honestly, I think it's fair. I think it's even fairer than the last agreement.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. I just wanted to say again, I've dealt with them before. This is notorious of how they work. They will never... And I'll say it publicly, they will never come to us and say, ironclad, this is what we're going to do. They're looking and feeling us out for what our boundaries are. And if we don't give them any, like Tom said, they're just going to keep changing the game plan over and over and over again. I did it with them for a couple of years straight. This is how they work. We need to just vote on this, accept it, hold their feet to the fire on it, and go from there. We've got so much more to gain right now. We keep playing the game, we're going to be on the losing end of the stick. And time is of the essence, in my opinion. We need to get something going. And they know that. So this is... This is exactly how they play. I've done it before with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Langton.
I just wanted to say, Alderman Nichols, I really, really hear what you're saying. And it's... I want to say that it's every alderman's choice to vote the way they want. And that's why we're here. And I talked... Alderman Sevenik will tell you... Well, I'll start out with Director Sam and the mayor last week. They know how unhappy I was. And Alderman Sevenik knows how unhappy I was today when he was trying to talk to me. So... But in the end, like I said, yeah, we need to get this done. And I'll bite my chin and vote on this. But Alderman Nichols, I absolutely understand where you're coming from.
Alderman Taylor.
I agree 100% with Becky on what she thinks is happening here. But I also agree 100% with Alderman Schmidt on what's happening here, too. And it's unfortunate that we have the situation like it is. But I think we can put it to rest tonight. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 7-1.
Okay, Item K is ordinances or resolutions. The ordinance is for the ward and district legal descriptions. These descriptions are the same descriptions as the map that we originally voted on. They're just in words. Alderman Sevenik.
Sure you didn't change anything?
Director Youngworth, myself, and the attorney, all reviewed these. We did find a couple problems with the engineer that we did have write these. But we did correct those. They didn't know the difference between Shoot Street and Main Street and how to spell Province Terrace. And there was one other something. Yeah, but they were all minor things. But we did actually go through this. And we probably spent the better part of a half a day reviewing all these. So yes, we do believe that they're the same.
And now the city clerk has to deal with it. With that, I will move for the adoption of O1021, the Ordinance Amending Title II, Chapter I, Section 2-1-1, 2-1-2, and 2-1-3 of the Code of Ordnances. This is for the city government election wards, districts, and legal description introduced by the mayor.
Here's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Alderman Grati.
Thank you, Mayor. What I'm finding is the confusion with the public. I lost half a ward and gained a whole new ward. And these people are asking, well, isn't your brother running? You don't live here. And so these, and now the ward that I do still have doesn't vote at Jefferson School anymore. So how is the city going to inform all of these people where they vote and where they don't vote, and that their district has been changed?
If I may, there is a letter generated by the Wisconsin Election Commission that is sent to those residents that were impacted by redistricting. This typically happens every redistricting across the city. Wherever there was changes, changes to a polling place, those voters will be notified in that method of those changes. And then once they receive that letter in the mail, if there still are questions as to what ward they are, what district, if what, who their alderman might be, they can certainly contact the clerk's office. But that letter that is being generated will include all of that information so they are properly informed on where they will be voting for the next election.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yes, it will be.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. There's also a way for residents to find out who their alderperson is via the city website. So is there a plan to update? What is the plan to update the information on that database?
So yes, we will update that information on that database, but also MyVote is another place where voters can find.
I understand that.
That information.
Yes.
So yes, we will be updating the website as well.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 8-0.
I do not see anyone from the public here at this point, and we do not need the closed session. So if there is a motion to adjourn, I would accept that. All those, all those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manasha with video recordings of city meetings. Manasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about city of Manasha issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, 920-967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.